Call a meeting to order. It's a meeting of December 17th. We'll note that all commissioners are present. And for the first item is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business? Dot, would there be a motion to approve the order of business as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. The motion carries. Next item then is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move to the non timetable agenda. And the first item we have there is to hear the November financial report from Mrs. Johnson.
Good evening, Mr. President Commissioners. I'd like to highlight a few items from the financial report through November. We'll begin with the general fund report. With ninety-two percent of the year completed, our property taxes equal $3.3 million and were one hundred percent collected compared to budget. Our other taxes and fees, which include financial institution tax and franchise fees, is ninety-six percent collected compared to budget. Our intergovernmentals include revenues we receive from state and local governments, such as the highway distribution tax and the oil production tax, and is one hundred and nine percent collected compared to budget. The biggest increase can be seen in our oil and gas production revenue, which is $314,000 more than expected and twenty-nine percent more than last year.
Mrs. Johnson, that revenue, is that the normal payment that each oil-producing county receives?
Correct.
And so Stark County is seeing more oil production, plus the state probably has more oil revenue to share.
That percentage.
That'd be the two factors?
Correct.
Okay.
Our licenses, licenses, fees, and services include building permit revenue and oil royalties, and is one hundred and twenty-three percent collected compared to budget. Our building permit revenue is up $761,000 over last year, and our municipal court fines are $185,000 more than last year. Our sales of city lots and equipment totals a million dollars through November, and our total general fund revenues equal $10.4 million and were ninety-three percent collected compared to budget. Our general fund expenses through November, they're broken down into groups. Our general government includes administration, court, finance, and buildings and grounds, and is one hundred and six percent expended compared to budget. We will see amendments for attorney fees and prisoner housing costs in this group. Our public safety, which includes police and fire, is ninety-five percent expended compared to budget, and our engineering and streets is also ninety-five percent expended. Our cultural services, which includes museum and forestry, is sixty-eight percent expended compared to budget. And our total general fund expenses equal $10.2 million through November, and were eighty-seven percent expended compared to budget. In our enterprise funds, our water and wastewater revenues equal $9.8 million through November, and were one hundred and fifty-two percent collected compared to budget, and fifty-one percent more than last year. Most of this increase can be found in our bulk water sales. Our expenses and capital outlays total $11 million, which is two hundred and six percent expended compared to budget. This increase is due to the construction of the wastewater treatment plant, which will be moving to the building construction fund. The amount for 2012 totals $4.6 million as of November. The solid waste fund revenues are $3.1 million through November, which is one hundred and eleven percent collected compared to budget, and sixteen percent more than last year. And our expenses and capital outlays total $2.4 million, which is eighty-seven percent expended compared to budget.
Mrs. Johnson, I have a question. Excuse me. But on the water, wastewater fund, I know, as you said, you've been beginning to make contractor payments out of that fund for the wastewater treatment plant. We also have some monies do us from the state, I think it's the Impact Office or State Land Office, whichever it is. Have we applied for those funds yet?
No, and that's actually where I have that total from, is I'm turning in that paperwork now. We actually do have over $5 million in expenses. Some were from a prior year, so we'll be asking for the full $5 million when we turn in our request.
Okay.
In our sales tax reports, in our one percent sales tax fund, we received $583,000 of revenue in November, which is up forty-five percent for the year. Our sales tax fund is broken into three groups. The first is our fifty percent share, which transfers fifty percent of our total revenue received to the street projects fund. This transfer will occur at year end. This transfer in 2012 is now estimated to be over $3 million. The second is our twenty percent share, which is for job creation and senior programs. This segment funds Stark Development, Elder Care, R S V P, and the Senior Citizen and Southwest Regional Grant Programs. And the third segment is the thirty percent share, which is set aside for capital improvements. The expenses here include $50,000 of our BAC pledge payment, with the rest in our hospitality tax. In our half percent sales tax, we received $292,000 of revenue in November, which is also up forty-five percent for the year. Our expenses here include the payments for the West River Community Center bond. In our hospitality tax, we received $75,000 of revenue in November, which is up thirty-four percent over last year. Our expenses include a million dollars for the Badlands Activity Center pledge payment, and $165,000 paid to the airport, Parks and Rec, and DSU for one-time subsidies. Our occupancy tax shows our revenues total $28,000 in November, which is up fifty-two percent over last year. Our expenses include $300,000 paid to the CBB for their subsidy, $60,000 for the special events grant, and $20,000 for the TR Symposium. In the street projects report, we received $95,000 of revenue, and we've expended $1.5 million towards those projects through November.
Can you back up? You're projecting an ending balance there of nearly $4.8 million in that fund?
Correct.
Okay.
And we do have some projects that we know are going to be using up some of this balance budgeted for 2013. Our development impact fee program, we show that this program has a balance of $182,000 available for the commitment at the end of November. This amount does not include the last application that was approved for the Fisher Eastside. Those are some of the highlights of the statements through November. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson. Are there further questions about the financial report, the financial statements?
Just one. We had the DOT project on Highway 22 this year, that I believe there was a local match. Have we been billed for that by the DOT? Has that been paid, or is that outstanding?
I don't have that in front of me, but I don't believe it has been paid or would not have showed up in the November information. I think we'll be seeing that in December.
Yeah, that sounds right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Would there be a motion to accept the financial report?
So moved.
We have the motion, and did I hear the second down there? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to item B, and then liquor license ordinance amendment. This is going to be the second reading of ordinance number 1492. Mr. Coling, anything you'd like to say in the way of introduction?
Yes, Mr. President Commissioners. As directed by the City Commission, after first reading of this ordinance, Chief Dawson grew day to organize a meeting with the current liquor license holders to explain some of the changes that are occurring in this ordinance. We believe that that meeting was successful in conveying to them some of the changes that are incorporated in this ordinance with respect to making license holders responsible for their parking lot areas and other areas under their control, and giving the City Commission some discretion to consider the manner in which those premises are controlled in their decisions on whether or not to renew a liquor license. There was one small change that we did make from first reading. It's on the first page of the document that was placed at your desks this evening, and that is to change the provisions regarding U.S. citizenship. The current version of the ordinance changes the requirements for citizenship to be a legal resident. We do have at least one license holder who is a legal resident of the United States but is not a citizen. This language change also makes our ordinance consistent with North Dakota Century Code and their requirements for legal residency as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coling. This time, if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance change, you may do so now. Just step to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anybody from the public? There's no one from the public that would like to comment? Are there any comments by other city staff or city commissioners? If not, would there be a motion regarding second reading of the ordinance?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 1492, second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll move to item B, and that is the liquor license, or, excuse me, item C, the liquor license renewals. Mr. Kessel, are you introducing that item?
I am, President Johnson. Thank you. You have before you a request to renew liquor licenses. This request is different than last year. We have four additional or new licenses than we had at this time last year. It breaks down in this particular method. There's seventeen on and off sale licenses. That represents an increase of one. The City Commission, as you recall, issued a license to Cashwise Coburns, actually, or Cashwise Foods, or Cashwise Liquors. We have three lodge licenses, three motel hotel licenses. The Astoria, I believe, is a new one that was issued this year. Nine on-sale licenses, which also has a new one, the Players Club, or Players Bar and Grill, and then two beer and wine, and the Men's Den is a new one that was issued this year. So a total of thirty-four licenses, four of them are new. I do want to bring your attention to, when the police department did do the background checks, there were a couple of items that did flag. Those have been prepared and submitted to you. These items are not, in the past, have not prevented anybody from getting their license, but it is something that we pay attention to, and if there was a second issue, that may then require us to make a recommendation differently than we are tonight. As it stands tonight, we are recommending the approval of all submitted liquor, renewal of all submitted liquor licenses.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. You've heard his introduction and recommendation. Any comments or questions? Dot, would there be a motion regarding his recommendation?
We approve the license renewal.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Stuckert?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. It's five o'clock. We have a fairly full timetable agenda, and so we'll begin with the five o'clock item, and that's to hear a presentation from Dickinson Parks and Recreation by President Mike LaFleur. So welcome, Mr. LaFleur.
Thank you, President Johnson, and members of City Commission and city staff. My name is Mike LaFleur, and I serve as president of the Dickinson Park Board. With me tonight, telling me the timeframe for us was 5:15, is our director, James Kramer, and park board member, Howard Sharp. I'm here tonight to share some pretty wonderful news with the community. Effective this month, the $12.3 million debt on the West River Community Center is now paid in full. That was a lot of fun to say, so I'm going to say it again. The $12.3 million debt on the West River Community Center is now paid in full.
Mr. LaFleur?
Yes, sir.
It wasn't $12.3 million in debt?
The cost was $12.3 million.
Cost, yeah.
Okay. It's paid in full.
Yeah.
That's my point. Thank you.
You know, if you could get your numbers right, someday you'd be on the City Commission.
That's okay. I'll figure I am. This is a wonderful accomplishment by a supportive community. When I think about the accomplishment and how to describe it, I always come back to one word, and that's grateful. We have so many people to thank for making this happen. In the beginning, a committee of local citizens banded together to sell the committee on the idea of selling, of supporting a sales tax that would help to pay the bond for the community center. They made presentations throughout the community. This committee called Destiny Dickinson was co-chaired by Von Kreip and Rhonda Dukart. And I hate to give credit to you, Mr. Mayor, but you're on that committee too, as well as Ernie Strube. The voters overwhelmingly supported the concept. And so they also started a fundraiser, because they felt, and correctly so, that that needed to be part of the process. The goal was to raise $1.5 million through in-kind and private donations, but they didn't raise $1.5 million, they raised $3 million. It was now up to the Dickinson Recreation Building Authority, led by then DSU President Dr. Lee Vickers, to reach out to the community by having public forums asking for input as to what should be included in the facility. The building authority then moved forward by hiring an architect and a construction manager. Throughout this process, the project enjoyed the strong support of so many organizations throughout the community. The city staff and commission, the park board and staff, the Chamber Commerce, local businesses, private donors, in-kind contributors, the list goes on and on. However, the strongest support came from the people in the southwest region, our community. When the community center opened its doors in May 2004, it was projected by a municipal consultant that for a community the size of Dickinson, which our population at that time, and I'm sure subject to correction by the mayor, would be between 16,000 to 17,000 people, we could expect a total membership of 1,750 members, which would decline in the second and third years. We did not have 1,750 members when we opened the doors. We had 4,170 memberships within days. People lined up outside the community center, eager to fill out their membership applications to join our new facility. As far as a decline in membership, that hasn't happened either. Four years after the opening, our membership grew to 4,861, and as of today, the membership stands at 6,069 members and growing. In 2004, we had 22 businesses sign up for their employees on the corporate plan. Today, we have 66. We are estimating that as of last week, that 3,145,838 total users have come through our doors. The monthly average is 25,830 users, which comes out to 847 users daily. When you visit the community center today, you will see that every area of the building is in use, whether it's playing basketball, racquetball, swimming, lifting weights, all areas are heavily utilized. People of all ages use the facility, whether you are one or 100. The community center offers something for you. Harold Bach is over 90 years old, and he trains for competition at the community center. He's the national champion in the 80 years and older division in the 100-yard dash. Nikki Fath had a dream to participate in the Boston Marathon. She trains at the West River Community Center, and she did compete in the Boston Marathon. The community center has been a focal point for local business in recruitment process. People coming into our community are amazed at the quality and the size of the community center. We've been fortunate to keep it affordable as well. It has been our goal since the opening of this facility to have it available for as many people as possible. The strategy has worked well, judging by the numbers. Today, the community center is bursting at the seams. Whether it's at our 5:00 AM opening, midday, or the evening crowd, it is heavily utilized. Most evenings, the parking lot is full. With the continued growth of our community, our numbers will grow with it. The Park District is proud of the role we have played in managing the community center for the past eight and a half years, and also appreciate the support received from the City Commission and staff during that time. Park District staff has worked hard to meet and exceed the expectations of the community. It is important to sit back and reflect on all the good things that have happened at the community center, and the positive impact it has had on so many lives. We need to celebrate our community's success. The West River Community Center was once a dream, and now for the past eight and a half years, it has been, become a successful reality beyond all of our wildest expectations. Thank you for your time and support. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. LaFleur. Any comments or questions?
Mr. President, Mr. LaFleur, I think a lot of the recognition should go out to the Dixon Park Recreation Board and its employees. I think you guys did an outstanding job managing it. If my memory calls, I believe we were setting aside $200,000 a year for alterations and so on, and I think you guys came to us, what, two, three, maybe four times out of these eight years?
Yeah, I think it was $200,000, $300,000 was Ballard King's estimate, and we've come just a few times to you to help with new carpet and things around the building, fixtures and so forth, so it's been very successful that way as well.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
I'd just echo Mr. Steiner's comments. Right from the construction process on the Dickinson Park and Rec, acted as the owner's representative. They did a great job during construction, and then their management of the facility has been nothing short of outstanding. Ballard King had projected that you would need $200,000 a year in operating subsidy in addition to maintenance, some maintenance funds. You haven't drawn one single dollar in operating subsidy, and your draw on the maintenance side, as you just stated, has been very minimal. When you go through the facility today, you see a little wear and tear, but nothing to the extent that you would expect for a building that has been open for eight and a half years and had over 3 million visitors. So you guys have done an outstanding job, and that's in spite of the leadership, James, that you've had as president of the board there. Well, Mr. LaFleur has done a great job leading that board too, so, very good.
Thank you.
And I think this is the first time you guys have come here and not asked us for anything, so we appreciate that too.
It's further down the [inaudible].
Oh, it's down. Okay.
President Johnson, may I?
Mr. President, Mr. LaFleur, did you want to mention something about tonight's gathering?
We will be having an open house social tonight at 6:30 at Lady J's for all of the donors and contractors, basically everybody involved with the original West River Community Center project.
Yeah, and of that $12.3 million, we borrowed $8 million with a bond, and we made the last bond payment, I think, early this month, right? And so it was set up over a 10-year period, and it's just outstanding that the community was able to do that and pay it off so quickly. So if you can get a burn permit, James, between now and 6:30, we can burn that bond document, you know? 5:10, we have a presentation by Stark Development Corporation and its director, Galen Baker. So, Mr. Baker, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the commission and everybody else, I'm a little intimidated to come up here. I've got some numbers, and I'm afraid I may be corrected. I did provide a handout that I'll, and I'll kind of go through the documents that are in there. I believe that the City Commission and others have that, but one of those documents is a list of 50 projects that we know of that are either recently completed, or underway, or announced in the Dickinson area. Put this list together back in October, just to kind of get a handle on where we're at with various things. We did publish and distribute it to an extent, and it has generated a number of calls to our office regarding some of the projects that are ongoing, certainly people who want to know more about them, and people who want to invest in them, or to bid on them, or get involved in them in some way. And so this has been a good thing for us. I hope that we can do this on a somewhat regular basis, when we have enough ammunition to fill the page. It happened to work out to exactly 50 projects. That was just by luck, but, you know, 50 seems like a nice number. I've also included our Dickinson, North Dakota, and Stark County Economy at a Glance. This is a publication we put together quarterly. We would do it more often if there were more information available on a regular basis. And of course, with a staff of two, we don't do a lot of original research, so we borrow most of these numbers, and we try to assemble them in a way that will help people to keep a grasp on what's going on in the local economy. And this is widely distributed, as well as, I believe you'll find both these documents, as well as many others, on our website, www.starkd e v dot com. In fact, today, we just had a fellow come in that was looking for information that we do have posted on our website, and that is a study that we helped fund about three years ago, which was a study done by the Mccone Group out of Minneapolis. It was a retail and services-type study of the potential for Dickinson for development of many different types of businesses. And so we have that posted on our website as well. That is a very good document that I think they did an awful good and incredibly accurate job of predicting what was going to happen in the Dickinson economy. Also included there, you have a list of our 2012 funding support. In round numbers, you know, we did one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different projects that were related to housing. And of course, housing has risen to the top as one of those issues that we really needed to address. We also did one manufacturing project. We did a couple of grants. Those grants that are mentioned, there were three that we approved that were contingent upon the rest of the funding coming through for the project. The one to Beyond Shelter, one to AK Investments, and one to the Housing Authority of the City of Bellfield. The Beyond Shelter project was not funded at the state level, so that never happened. So we didn't spend those dollars. We did, however, you know, in round numbers, we invested $700,000 in order to get $13 million worth of investment in economic development projects. $600,000 of that $700,000 will eventually get back. It'll take us somewhere between five and 15 years, but we do get a repay on the community share of the investment in pace projects. So we don't charge interest on that money, but we do get it back eventually. We did give away some money too, to the Chamber of Commerce, to the, we are a member of the Theodore Roosevelt Expressway Association, which works to get U.S. Highway 85 eventually four-laned, so that we can have a, complete that loop of four-lane highways in western North Dakota and have much safer ground transportation. We gave some money to help with the development of a tourism plan and a couple of other smaller And also, you know, you can see all that sort of thing going on. What's going on right now is, of course, we're coming up on the legislative season, and certainly it appears this is going to be one of the most important legislative seasons that I've ever seen for western North Dakota. Just for the, I know you guys know this, but for the good of those that might be listening that don't, oil and gas, the oil wells and so forth, they don't pay a property tax. They pay an extraction tax and a production tax, and that is collected by the state, not by the county like a property tax is. And so the oil money mostly goes to Bismarck, and then we have to go over there and compete with all of North Dakota to get back that money that we need as a community and that western North Dakota needs. So it'll be a very busy time at the legislature. I know that a lot of people will be involved in the partnership to go down there and make sure that legislators fully understand what the impacts are here and what's needed to address those impacts, and we hope to be able to help with that. needed to address those impacts, and we hope to be able to help with that. I would like to also say briefly that, you know, things have changed a lot since we first started getting into economic development out here. 15 years ago, it was all about job creation for our many young people. Now it's about getting more young people for all the jobs we've got created, and so those tables have turned, and we've tried to be nimble and turn with them. You know, we are sort of a Petri dish for the nation, I think, in that full employment is coming, and the demographics of the nation show that that's going to happen, and we're among the first to have that happen to us. And I really believe that we've, you know, certainly, part of it was your leadership that saw, kind of saw this coming, and way back in 2000, we started to think as a community about how do we become the place where people want to live? And the West River Community Center, great project that helped us get there. I know after me, the airport is talking, another great project that's going to help us to be very progressive in helping to attract the people that we need to fill the jobs we have. We need to keep going down that path, I'm sure, in order to continue to create the quality of life that people are going to be attracted to. It's not just jobs anymore, it's quality of life and quality of place, and I think the city of Dickinson's doing a lot to get us there. Other communities around the area in Stark County are doing likewise. I sure hope that we can all work together and continue to do that and achieve some great things in the coming year as well. About all I have. Any questions? I'd be glad to answer if I can.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Are there any comments or questions? Do you, I have a question. Do you still field a lot of calls from outside developers?
Sure do. We've got a-
Is that tapered off at all, or?
Well, it's tapered off from its peak about 18 months ago, but it is still a pretty steady stream, and, you know, it's a mix of projects that they're interested in, some are interested in oilfield services development, some housing, some retail, professional services, so it's kind of more across the board now, and that's good to see. I hope that we're able to fill in those sectors that follow on that primary sector employment, round out our economy and bring the balance back to it. Of course, to do that, we need to see more of that affordable housing element.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Anything else here? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. It's 5:20, and the airport authority has requested time, and they're going to talk to us about an environmental assessment for jet service. So Matt, welcome.
President Commissioners, thank you. Today, I'm in to request $50,000 for an environmental assessment needed to, needed for the commencement of jet service at the airport. At this time, the airport does not have an announcement from any airline indicating that we will get jet service. However, we did find out in early September that environmental, a jet service environmental assessment is required because we have not had jet service in the past. And in order to get jet service, we need to have this completed. We are somewhat fortunate to find out about this early as it gives us time to prepare. We have actually given KLJ, the engineer working on this assessment, the opportunity to start and get what they can complete it before the announcement. A majority of the work needed for the environmental assessment cannot be done until an announcement is made by an airline, because the environmental assessment looks at noise, and we need to understand what type of aircraft is being used and what type of flight schedule that the airline will operate. From there, they'll do the noise analysis, the environmental assessment, all, excuse me, also requires alternatives, should we be moving the airport, et cetera. The environmental assessment will obviously not come to that conclusion, but it will be looking at those as well. Having closed our budget, this was obviously an unexpected expenditure that we didn't find out about until our budget was approved. We approve our budget in August every year. The airport authority did need to discuss this, and we feel that the hospitality tax does apply here for tourism. We, every October, we see a large influx of pheasant hunters utilizing the area. Also, just overall, we see spikes certain times of the year where we feel tourism is a little bit heavier, such as the DSU graduation, hunting, holiday season as well, where we have a lot of people coming in that don't necessarily live here in our, are utilizing the services that tourists do, the airline service, motels, hotels, restaurants, et cetera.
Thank you, Matt. Are there any comments or questions? If I understood your request, that you might do some work prior to any announcement, but most of the money would be spent only if there wasn't an announcement?
Correct. If we don't, there will be a small amount of work that can be done beforehand, basically preparing everything so when the flight schedules do come out, that we can basically get, go right away, because the airlines have indicated, as we've spoken with them, that they're going to want to see 90 days. They want to be ready to go 90 days from their announcement, whenever that may be. And the, if we start to finish this environmental, it's about four months or 120 days, so we're trying to get some of that stuff done up front, so we can keep it within that 90-day period. Yes, it would be based on the announcement.
We only have two weeks left in this year, are you anticipating doing any work in the, this two weeks, or is this a 2013 project?
Could be a 2013 project.
Are there other questions or comments? If we are to fund this, I do agree with you that the hospitality tax is a fund that it could come out of and qualify for. Are there, what is the feeling of the commission? I mean, is this something you're interested in doing, and if so?
Mr. Chairman, I think the other thing we have to recognize is the economic development part of this too. We bring in jet service. If we're successful doing that, there's going to be a really significant economic development part of that. So that's just a strong justification, as far as I'm concerned, is the tourism part.
I would have to agree. I think it's getting a jet service here versus what we have would be the key to upping all of our passenger to, as far as, I noticed the numbers were down, and it's probably because we lost seats to Williston again, right?
Yes, there's really three things that the airport is attributed to. One is Williston has gotten the service. We've talked with travel agents in town who basically said they're now seeing people that are, when they go to work, they go north, and then they're at the halfway point, so they just continue on to Williston and take the flight out of there versus Dickinson. Also, unfortunately, we've had a travel agent who has just said enough with some of the issues from the current airline and has been booking passengers out of other airports. And then the third is just, we, overall, we, as I've talked with Mr. Kessel, Economic Development, Galen Baker, we've seen a little bit of a slowdown in the oil industry right now because of the budget issue, so, but we expect our numbers to increase again in January.
And I understand Delta goes to Minneapolis and United to Denver?
Out of Williston, yes.
Okay.
Other comments, questions?
Mr. Ramsey, currently, the largest passenger plane is what, 39 or 50?
30 seats is what we have right now.
30, and going to the jet would bump it up to?
50, is what we're anticipating. There are several regional jets. There's a 39-seater, 42-seater, and then 50-seaters is what we're anticipating would be operating, basically the same setup as Williston, the ERJ-145, which is a 50-seat regional jet.
And with the 50-seater, do you have to extend the runway or the landing?
No. The ERJ-145, which is the anticipated aircraft, is, we've had our engineers actually run the performance, and we've talked with airlines, and that airline would, or that aircraft would be able to operate off our airfield.
Would you be able to operate them out of your current airport as well?
I'm sorry, could you-
Would you be able to operate them with your current facility as well, or would there have to be an expansion to the building?
We are, are looking at doing, as I actually presented this, this plan to my board last Tuesday, we are, I have a plan that shows if we get an announcement, this is what we have to do. We do have to put an expansion, some sort of expansion on the terminal to handle the additional traffic, because we're anticipating that we could have a 50-seat aircraft operating in the terminal plus a 30-seat aircraft, so we could be looking at the potential of 80 passengers in the terminal at any given time. Our current terminal is only designed to hold 150-seater aircraft, so we'd be looking at temporary buildings, modular buildings, that we would position next to the terminal to handle the overflow traffic, also to handle the offices for the potential second and third airlines.
So then, would you be coming back to ask for money for your expansion as well?
No, we would be, what I would like to do with that, and the way I have it planned, is that we would be looking at modular-style buildings that we could lease. So we would incorporate that fee of bringing that building to the airport into the airline's operating fees.
Matt, one additional question. In terms of the timeframe that it takes a jet to fly from here to Denver, how much time is gained?
Compared to our current aircraft?
Correct.
Right now, I believe the regional jets are going from Williston to Denver in about an hour and a half, and we're about a half-hour difference between here and Williston, so we'd be looking at an hour versus right now, from, when you get on the plane to when you get off the plane, I'd say right now it is a full two, two hours, two hours, 15 minutes with our current aircraft. With the new one, I would say an hour and a half. So you'd be looking at taking 45 minutes off your trip.
Okay, thank you.
Matt, I have another question, or more comment. I think with the jet, the connections would be better too. That's, we've had a problem with that as far as the current airlines versus with your connecting flights.
The connections would probably be the same if you're talking about the times in Denver?
Right.
Yeah, they, more than likely, I would anticipate that the proposed airline would probably match up with the current times that Great Lakes has, so we probably would have very similar connection times.
But better.
Yes, but better, yeah.
As Mr. Jackson pointed out, this would be a tremendous economic development boost too, so if you choose to fund this, we can fund it either out of our 20% fund, or we can fund it out of the hospitality tax fund. Again, my recommendation would be that we just fund it out of the hospitality tax fund and that we do it in 2013 and not in the 2012 budget. So how do you feel about doing this? Do you want to go ahead and do it?
Yes.
And, and is the hospitality fund okay with you guys? So we would just, I think, need a motion approving his request, and that it'd be funded in 2013 from the hospitality fund. Would anybody care to move that motion?
I'd make that motion.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Matt, you were doing so well. We had two presentations, nobody asked us for money, and then you showed up.
I'm sorry, and I will be back next month too, but it'll be for a loan, so.
Has Matt ever shown up, not asking?
No, he hasn't, I don't think.
So his records consist at least.
Okay, we have the motion and the second. We'll vote. Mr. Oldman?
Aye.
Mrs. Stooker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Snyder?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries.
Right, thank you guys very much.
You have a good evening.
You too.
Go get us some jets. It's almost 5:30, is the 5:30 folks ready to go? We have a variance request on Cook Meadow Hills fourth edition, and Mr. Coleing, you're introducing that item.
Mr. President Commissioners, I will introduce to you Harvey Schneider, Harvey's been before us before, but he will be presenting the matters pertaining to the request for variance.
Okay, thanks, Matt. Evening, President, Commissioners. With me tonight is Mike Cook, also a developer. We concur with the statement as Mr. Coleing has written on his packet that he mailed out to you for the variance request. And I was going to ask, does everybody have a copy of the map showing the area that's shaded in, such a radius area? Okay. Also, on the December 4th, we had a meeting with city staff, and we went over the information regarding this well site and the well in depth. Kathy Spillman was there when we were going through everything with the city staff, and I guess with that, Kathy Spillman is here this evening with K2 Engineers, and she'll present their assessment on this crude oil well up in the Cook Meadow Hills area. With that, Kathy?
President Commissioners, my name is Kathleen Spillman, I'm the Managing Director of K2 Engineers and Consulting. We're located in Mandan, North Dakota, and we do predominantly regulatory affairs work. We were engaged by Cook Construction to conduct an assessment on a Klein production well where the proposal is before you this evening to modify the current Dickinson city ordinance for a setback to residential structures. Originally, or previously to about June of this past year, it was 150-foot setback. It was increased at that time to 300-foot, was being proposed, is essentially a request for a variance back to the previous 150-foot level. The entire risk assessment of that type of residential development hinges on the type of crude oil that is currently produced by the Klein production well. As we went out and took samples at the wellhead, so this was part of it being processed, this would indicate its condition should something unfortunate happen at the well site or in the flow line that leaves the well. And essentially, I know this is difficult to see, but essentially, based on production numbers, the sample we took is consistent with the information on file with the North Dakota Industrial Commission, the Oil Gas Division, as far as the production numbers, but you're looking at about 95% produced water and only 5% oil. The oil that's produced by that well is the Heath Formation. It is one of the heaviest crudes in North Dakota, it's also very, very viscous. The water has been removed from this crude oil sample, okay? It is in excess of 40% paraffin. It has a pour point in excess of 100 degrees Fahrenheit. So it is essentially, by most people's definition, a solid at room temperature. It leaves the well at 60 degrees Fahrenheit, which is colder than the pour point by 40 degrees. So from a assessment, the conversation that I had with Chief Seabock of the Dickinson City Fire Department, his concerns were threefold, and predominantly having to do with health and safety, having to do with what is the possibility of a fire or blow occurring from that well, concern of whether or not any gas, off gases from that well could hug the ground and find an ignition source in an adjacent residential area where typically you have water heaters and HVAC furnaces in the basement as opposed to in a commercial development, where you may have those types of ignition sources on the top of the building. And then his third concern was the Emergency Response Guide, which is a conglomeration of best practices that is funded by the United States Department of Transportation and other agencies to standardize and pre-compile things like evacuation distances for different types of events. That book does support 150-foot as opposed to the current ordinance of 300-foot setback. His concern was that the book was based on a transportation-related incident, but what we- But what we have to remember is that recommenda, recommendation is for an incident occurs that has occurred or could occur regardless of what the source, whether it was a stationary source or a transportation type of vehicle per se. So there is significant industry standard to support 150-foot distance. It is certainly workable. This particular crude oil, you know, it's not an immediate hazard. It's not going to flow. It does, the production data from the well does show a trace amount or a little bit of natural gas. Natural gas has a molecular weight less than air, which means should, you know, the pipe break or some other incident occur at the well, any gas associated with the well should evolve out into the air as opposed to rolling along the ground and looking for an ignition source. The other concern that was expressed was, unfortunately, we had another incident here in North Dakota again where we had a blowout in this case. The oil that was leaving the well did not ignite, so it was much easier to contain. We pulled the record not only from the department, North Dakota Department of Emergency Services, but from the National Fire Database through the assistance of the North Dakota Fire Marshal's Office. We looked for a pattern of well blowouts that have occurred. We pulled all the data since 2006. It's pretty common understood that the operation in North Dakota as far as oil production since 2006 is in no way resembling what we had prior to that point in time until we had all this wonderful activity in the Bakken. And pulling those records and looking at the four incidents that has occurred, they all have to do with very new wells. The particular event that happened last week, that well is, you know, less than a year old. In fact, I think it's only a couple of weeks old. They're just essentially placing it into service. And that's consistent with if you look at the fires and other emergency events that are associated with the oil and gas industry in North Dakota. If you look at when, you know, these handful of well blowouts occur in over 7,000 wells here in North Dakota, they're associated with new wells when there's still many, many, many barrels to be recovered, many thousand standard cubic feet of natural gas to be recovered, and that's where the high risk is. In this particular case, this well was originally drilled in the 1960s. So it is on, you know, the tail end of its operating life. So with all of that taken into consideration, you know, my assessment is that it's a very low risk being posed by this well. The type of well oil that would be emitted from that site is heavy, is thick, it does not have off gassing, it's got a very high pour point, it's very viscous, it's not going to flow very far. And I believe in your packet there was a copy of my recommendation. There's actually a revised copy of that document because we did in fact have the incorrect well number. What is in your packet indicates the well produces about 46 barrels a day of oil, and that is in fact correct. What is in your packet indicates there's between 20 and 30 barrels a day of produced water. That is not correct. It actually produces between 90 and 120 barrels a day. So it is well excess of 90% water and less than 10% oil. There is a little bit of natural gas that comes off this mature well. But again, natural gas is lighter than air, so if there was anything, that gas, the little bit of gas that is produced at that well, would evolve immediately into the air as opposed to rolling along the ground. So on that basis, it's my professional recommendation to suggest a variance be granted back to 150 feet as opposed to the current ordinance that requires a 300-foot setback. One of the recommendations I've also provided is that a ground, the ground be sloped to provide a berm, a landscape berm or some type. So if this fluid was in fact to be released in an uncontrolled manner, that there would be some surface to prevent this water and this combination material to roll onto a residential area and make a mess. Don't think there's an issue with it igniting. I did run bench scale tests, igniting it as this is, igniting it on a 50/50 mixture in soil, it does not support combustion in those circumstances. And if you take the, you know, just the canted crude oil, you have to heat it up to in excess of 110 degrees Fahrenheit, and you'll get a momentary flash, and it will not support combustion. So, you know, even if it were to find ignition source, the Heath crude here is not going to pose a hazard as maybe some of the other crudes in North Dakota or around the world Any questions?
What is your recommendation then for a barrier other than land barrier for around the perimeter of the well? We've talked about a lot of different things as far as fencing it in. What's your recommendation there?
I mean, it depends on the perspect, it depends on what goal you're trying to achieve. From a, from a safety standpoint, if you're concerned that adolescents or other people would access the well, you know, that's really kind of outside the scope of what I was asked to look at. There is a well around the pump jack right now up near it. Certainly from a standpoint of having an industrial location within a residential area, there certainly would be concern from that perspective. You know, obviously, if this is the first time where this issue is coming to the front of the commission, you know, what gets said here is going to be, you know, setting precedent. All of those are valid concerns. I don't know that I'm the best person to answer that for you.
Okay.
Ms. Spillman, with the low production coming out of this well, would this well be a candidate for fracking? And if so, what does that do to your risk assessment of it?
First of all, I'm going to preface this, but I'm not a reservoir engineer, geological engineer. My background is chemical engineer, fire safety, processing crude oil. However, based on the production, I mean, that's really something that you'd have to pose the operator as far as what his plans are. But here's what the records show, I can repeat fact. I can repeat fact that it's a, it's a straight well, it's not horizontal, it is not in the Bakken. So that, the well that, or the formation that it in right now is not of interest using those horizontal and fracking technologies. That has been limited to some of the other formations such as the Bakken, the DeBrow, the Three Forks. And then we're talking a completely different formation. But, I mean, I can't speak on behalf of the producer.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Jackson? Ms. Spillman, you said no natural gas. Any other gases?
There is an average production of natural gas, about 1,000 standard cubic feet per day. But other gases, no. I mean, the natural gas is not a gas, it's a combination of gases, so there might be trace amounts of propane and ethane in the natural gas, predominantly it's going to be methane. But we did not run a compositional analysis on the natural gas.
Thinking about hydrogen sulfide?
The hydrogen sulfide, good question, sir. It is a low sulfur, no hydrogen sulfide.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Mr. Schneider, do you have anybody else that's going to speak on behalf of your group? Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to speak to this issue?
Mr. President, members of the commission, Mike Miles appearing on behalf of Klein Production Company. I'm not speaking for or against the variance, just providing some additional information. This well is one that primarily produces water. We, our formula was 80/20. It could be 90/10. The well to the east, which is not on Mr. Cook's property, is just the opposite, is about 80% oil, 20% water. It is Heath sand oil, which is the very thick oil. Klein Productions' main concern though is the pipeline, and as was mentioned, the possibility of putting berms around that. His main concern is if pipeline breaks, he doesn't want oil running into somebody's house or yard or something like that. So those are his main concerns. I, we have no comments on the professional opinion about the flammability. We know that is Heath sand oil is very thick. Know there's a lot of water comes out of that well also. And I could confirm, Carson, that at the present time it is, there's no plans to drill a horizontal Bakken or anything that would require fracturing that would increase significantly the production of that well. They do work it over from time to time, but nothing major like that. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Miles? So again, would you, your concern is with the pipelines themselves?
Correct.
And what, what is the concern again?
The main concern is if the pipeline bursts, the suggestion was made, and we've suggested it before too, that the top of the pipeline be burned so that it would not run out on either side.
Right.
And you could also berm around the location, but I don't think there's a major risk of an oil blowout or spill that's significant right on the location. Biggest concern would be the pipeline.
Okay. Is the, in terms of this variance request, and this is a question, I guess, to city staff, does the variance request involve the pipeline or not? Have we, haven't we dealt with the pipeline issue previously?
Mr. President, I can address that. The variance request only addresses the wellhead itself and the distance, spacing distance from the wellhead. The pipeline, I believe, was dealt at the plating stage, and we did create an easement that was noted on the plat, so that pipeline is noted on the, on the plat as an easement for that.
So if we grant the request or deny the request, it doesn't do anything to the pipeline tonight?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Does that, you understand?
I understand that. I'm coming back here every time because sometime when there's going to be a blowout, Mr. Klein is going to come to me, and we're going to say we did everything we could to prevent that. So that's my main purpose for being.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to this? Mr. Seabok?
President Johnson, Commissioners, a couple points of clarification. In granting the variance tonight, if that is your course of action, you are not going back to something that was already in place. Residential occupancies were not addressed. They were not addressed by the 2009 International Fire Code as adopted by the city of Dickinson. And as I've stated at previous meetings, the reasons why residential group R occupancies were not addressed by the fire code is because residential occupancies just don't end up next to, adjacent to, immediately adjacent to industrial occupancies, which well sites are considered by the code. Any type of use group is not specified in Chapter 40 of Dickinson Municipal Code. So there wasn't anything on the books stating that residential occupancies were to be a certain footage away. The best we could do is take what the code gave us and make, make a best guess. That's why we tried, the city planner and myself and engineering department tried to get residential occupancies put into code so that it was recognized as other occupancies are by the 2009 International Fire Code. The references made to the Emergency Response Guidebook stating that distances to be maintained from a crude oil spill are 150 feet can be interpreted as several different ways. That's from the product. There's, there's other guides, there's other codes that come to play when you're looking at something like a well site. It's not just dealing with the product. And the comments that were made concerning the Emergency Response Guidebook and that spacing, that is correct. But the other thing that we need to keep in mind is the 2009 International Fire Code. That addresses the site, that addresses the operation, the dynamics of something that can go on, not just the product. So that isn't the only referenced material. I'd also like to state that I'm familiar with K-2 Engineering's work, and I do believe they did do a good job in this case. One of the things that Ms. Spillman mentioned that kind of concerns me a bit, and I really don't know if maybe she can add to this, there is some off gassing of natural gas, but it's also been recognized that propane or methane may be in that natural gas. Natural gas is lighter than air and will disperse to the atmosphere. Propane or methane, however, is heavier than air and will follow the ground. I'm, I don't know, I'm wondering if maybe she can add to that, if there's, if there's a percentage that's in there that is a concern. Any questions?
Chief Seabok, if we set a precedence here, that means that all residential would be able to build within 150 feet of any well site. Am I correct?
Commissioner, I'm glad you brought that up. I would hope that this, this variance could be looked at, that this does not set a precedent. The best we can do in all cases, if from this point forward, is maintain the spacing, minimum required spacing. The distance is what we are after. Anything else? Taking that distance and cutting it in half in other locations and other circumstances does not take away potential, potential for harm. It doesn't take away potential for harm here either. The fire code does recognize a third-party opinion from a registered and licensed engineer as K-2 Engineering is. We can take that study and we can say, you know, we accept this document, we put this document in the file. My recommendation to the city commission is that in all cases, we try to maintain our spacing. The spacing is the best thing we can do in all circumstances. And there were comments that were made that there are other safety issues to be considered, and that is true. Kids and adults get hurt on well sites nationwide all the time. And they, they are something that some individuals will go to. And there are, there's things out there like some kids in some locations, they do something called trying to ride the pump jack. And they actually get torn apart, quite honestly, when they do that. We had an incident on State Avenue where there was a valve turned, and there was a fine oil spray that was emitted into the neighborhood. That was an act of vandalism. That site's been fenced now. There are definitely those concerns that the city needs to be aware of and that we need to have some hard and fast rules on that may or may not be a part of this particular issue. But it's definitely, there's more concerns here than, than just that. There's, you know, other safety concerns that have been mentioned that we need to be aware of.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Just a minute. Mr. Steiner, Mr. Cole, on the issue of setting precedents, can, can you give kind of your legal view of that? If we're to support this variance request today, would we be setting a precedence that ties us in on future requests?
Mr. President, I believe with any of these variance requests, you would have to look at them on a case-by-case basis. There are particular facts with this well that may make a variance appropriate, given the pour point of the well and some of the other factors that were addressed. In the event that you would receive another variance request, those same factors would have to be weighed and to determine whether or not the variance was in the best interest of the city, the public's health, safety, and welfare. Simply approving a variance for this well, for these circumstances does not bind you to granting a similar variance for another well that would come in the future. I should note as well, the plat for, for this development was approved before we got back to changing the distance spacing requirement in Title 40. Subsequent plats, we have dealt with this issue as well, where there may be an existing well on a newly platted area, and we have required through Mr. Corton's office that 300-foot spacing requirement to be identified on the plat as a no build, no build requirement within that 300-foot distance. So for future plats, we should have that on there, that it will be maintained as a 300-foot setback.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cole. Mr. Steiner, I'm sorry, but go ahead.
That was my question exactly.
Great minds think alike. Okay. Ms. Spillman, is there, or Ms. Spillman, is there anything you'd like to add to your testimony after hearing the Chief Seabok's comments?
To address his concern on natural gas, again, natural gas is a mixture and it varies from well to well. But a typical raw natural gas from a wellhead would be well in excess of 80% methane and then some amount, maybe 5 to 10% of ethane, and then smaller amount, something in the neighborhood of less than 10% for combined propane and heavier. So, but we do not have analysis on that, but I've seen multiple analysis from wells across North Dakota, and that'd be a ballpark number.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here that wishes to comment on this issue? Commissioners, do you have any other comments or questions?
Just, just one other.
Go ahead, Mr. Steiner.
Would that well have a gas sensor at that site?
I did not see one, but again, that's probably something that would have to be, you know, addressed to the production. It is not, you, typically where you see a gas sensor installed would be at a production well that has high hydrogen sulfide. Otherwise, they typically are not installed.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, I'm just not comfortable with the 150 feet, so just want you to know that.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, can we get Mr. Corton just to, this is the second or third time that that I think we've looked at this formally or informally. Can you bring us up to speed on the rest of the variance request? Are there other requirements that we've talked about putting on this? The fencing issues, the burn issues, some of those kinds of things?
Sure, Commissioner Jackson, with respect to your question, this has been brought up several times. You know, with, the conditions that we would look at would be similar to the recommendations from Ms. Spillman, that the, that a berm no higher or at a minimum height of 12 inches or higher be built or placed or erected around the wellhead site per her recommendations. I would strongly request that that would be a perpetual easement for the reason of that. It's a safety factor for the surrounding residents. The last thing you want is somebody to come back later, look at that as a hill or just a little obstruction when you're doing landscaping and kick it away and adversely impact them potentially. So, you know, those issues can be crafted as part of your decision if you decide to approve it tonight. You could leave it up to city staff, both myself and Coley, to draft that condition to appropriately address the issue. With respect to the rezoning, we're talking about a rezoning, that's the next item for this. This item's been around for a while. I would agree with Mr. Coley that we have looked at this. We will resolve the issues in the future. We will address this issue. There may be one or two that we'll have in the future. And each of those, as Mr. Coley has mentioned, we'll have to look at separately, base it upon the merits in order to make a decision. So I don't know if that answered your question specifically.
What about the fencing?
Oh, the fencing issue, that's something that we have discussed, Mr. Coley and myself, looking at revising the code, Chapter 40, to require that. This is an existing site prior to our requirements that you have to put fencing on there, so in essence it's vested in. The question that comes to play, can we require that as part of a variance requirement? You have to have a natural nexus to that requirement. I guess I'll leave it up to Mr. Coley if we think we can add that to it. The berm, yes, that is a direct correlation, and I would recommend that be part of a condition for approval if you decided to go that way. The fencing issue can be added as well, to be determined by a party that'll need to be taken care of. But we're looking at changing that part of the code, and we haven't had time to look at it, to require existing wellhead sites to meet the code as it is today. That would be a modification to the code. I think we could do that, but we have not made a decision. I don't know if Mr. Coley wants to comment directly on it, but we've looked at modifying it to bring existing sites up to our current standards with respect to safety issues. It makes sense. The question is, can we require that?
Mr. Coley, do you wish to comment?
As Mr. Cortant said, we are looking at changes to Title 40 addressing the fencing issue, and we have not gotten that ordinance put together. I think for the purposes of this variance, I would probably recommend leaving the fencing issue out and allow us to come back through the ordinance and give you a code change that we can adopt and enforce at that point. My sense of it is though that the fencing issue should probably be dealt with separately from the berm and the other conditions that are recommended by the engineer.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments here? I have a comment. I will support the variance request. I think in this case, you have two items that make it different. One is it was platted and we approved the plat. Two, you have a certified engineer who I think has convincingly stated that this is a very low-risk well. And I think, given those two situations, I could support the variance. I agree that on a go-forward basis, that the best policy when we have wells within the city limits is that we stay 300 feet away from them. But I think this one, you know, we were developing around before we came to that realization. And so I think we should go ahead and grant the variance. If you want to tie a berming condition to it, I don't have a problem with that if Mr. Coley says that's within our legal right to do so.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jackson.
I agree with all you've said, and I'll support it too, but I just want to be really clear that we will have the opportunity to require fencing. I mean, that seems like a no-brainer in a residential neighborhood, but we'll have that opportunity in the future.
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Well, I want you to know FHA standards are 200 feet from a well site, so I will not support it.
Any other comments? Does anybody care to make, move a motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Steiner.
Move to approve as requested.
Do you mean that, or do you mean with the berming condition?
With the berm and the conditions and with Mr. Jackson's concern.
So the motion would be to grant the variance request with a berm?
Correct.
I'll second.
We have the motion to second. Mr. Coley, do you think that's clear enough?
I'm fine with that motion.
Okay. We have the motion to second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mrs. Stukert.
No.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the motion carries. That brings us to the 540 timetable agenda item. That is a rezoning petition then regarding this same area. It is an ordinance. And Mr. Cortant, you will introduce that.
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioners, this is a rezon petition from residential, single-family to medium-density residential for lots 7 through 9, lots 13 and 14 of Block 11 of Cook Meadow Hills, Fourth Edition. This is the area in question from the preceding agenda item. The property is located south of Wall Street, west of Cody Avenue, and north of Maryland Street, and northwest part of the city. Since the city has granted the variance reduction for 150 feet, both the Planning and Zoning Commission and city staff would recommend approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Cortant. Is there an ordinance number here?
Mr. President, this will be ordinance 1494.
Okay. This time, we'd open it to the public. If you would wish to comment on ordinance 1494, you may do so now. You just step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public that wishes to comment. Are there comments by city staff or city commissioners?
Mr. Cortant, did you say that the, you were in support of this change?
That is correct. It would be similar to the properties to the west of it. If you look on the zoning map, R2 is located to the west of it. Some of the properties that would be affected by the prior wellhead ordinance are R2 properties. And, but this would be consistent, the block would be essentially R2 except a small portion of properties that are no longer, no longer part of the applicant's ownership, and they will remain as R1. And both the planning commission felt that that would be, that would be okay to leave that remnant piece of some R1 properties.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Just a question, are these the same, in the same area that we just voted on?
That is correct.
Any other questions or comments? Would there be a motion regarding the first reading of ordinance 1494?
Move to approve first reading.
We have the motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion to second. Further discussion? No other discussion, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mrs. Stukert.
No.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Brings us to the 550 timetable agenda item. This is regarding the possible Haroff annexation. Mr. Cortant, are you introducing this item?
That is correct, Mr. President. If you recall, a couple of meetings ago, Mr. Cook and the Haroff Group, they requested an annexation with the commission. After a long and lengthy discussion, the motion or the annexation was tabled. Towards the end of the presentation, Mr. Cook asked if you would like to see a concept plan for the proposed subdivision. The commission concurred, and Mr. Cook and his team are here tonight to present that to you. No action is requested at this time, but they just want to present that to you, so you have that for informational purposes. Mr. Cook?
President Johnson, Commissioners, rest of city staff. I think Mr. Cortant hit it on the head. We're here to continue a discussion of when we were here back on December 4th about the Haroff property, that we are trying to get to have a next into the city and what our vision is for the property. And I guess, as you can see in front of you, this is the vision that we have for that particular piece of property. We had a long staff meeting with Mr. Cortant and his group back about a week and a half or two weeks and presented it to him. I thought the meeting went fairly well, I guess. We took some of the recommendations that Edna's group had given us as far as tweaking some things here and there, and everything hopefully fits into the comprehensive plan that the city had for that area, hitting 115th Avenue or Street and 34th Avenue. We, as you can see, the center portion of the plat is highly geared towards residential housing, single-family residential housing. We, as we went out of that, which is in fact out of the usable property, once you take out all the streets and the sidewalks and the right-of-ways and the park areas, that ends up being about 22%, or I'm sorry, the residential ends up being about 36% of the entire project. We went into the R2, which if you can see on your stuff around the map, would be the outerlying little house plans. They show up by having a split line through the middle of them because they would end up being split properties or could be considered as single-family dwellings also. That portion of the usable space is about 17%. We went into a couple of different other areas. You'll see some little bigger buildings in there that are a little bigger than the single-family residential or the duplexes. This is a project that I specialize myself in the Bismarck-Meannan area. They're a four-unit condominium project, which brings you into four single-family people living in one building. Been very successful in our area, and I've done a few of them out here to get a feel for it. It's been very successful out here. We then moved on out into the outlying areas and went into what we would want to consider the R3 zoning. And on a few of your buildings, you're going to see that we have condominium put onto the roof lines. And what we have here is we actually have some groups that are very interested in putting up high-rise condominiums, whether it be 24 units, 30 units, whatever they can get onto the particular pieces of property. But unfortunately, those also have to have an R3 zoning to make them work. After that, we went into the next area, which would be the R3 or the multi-dwelling units, as we want to call them. And we've really toned that down to approximately about 500 total units throughout the whole project, which ends up being about, about 21 to 22% of the entire project. So we've really, really toned that down. We feel that the areas they're in are areas that are going to require them because of the traffic and where they're at, they're off onto the distant sides of it. In the upper left-hand corner and along the left-hand side, we've left a large area for commercial, assuming that corner will identify itself as a commercial area. And again, I think all of these areas fit into the comprehensive plan that was put together for the city. So what we want to really do here, or what we're hoping to do tonight, and we're here to answer all questions and anything else that will arise, is continue with trying to get, whether it be all of this property or whether it be part of this property, into the annexation mode so that we could continue to service or help Dickinson bring in some more housing that would be readily available to the city. This whole project, the whole 320 acres, only compromises about 1,200 units, which is a far cry from what the city's going to need. We're going to have some other gentleman talk here, and as we get into this with what can be serviced into this area, we'll be cutting that in half, down to about 550 total units is all that would end up coming into the city with this project if we end up doing about half of it. So I guess I'm ready for questions?
Well, just so the public understands where this is, now this is the full 320 acres that we're seeing here on the.
Yes, sir.
And then the eastern.
Well, it's actually about 310 acres.
Okay. That's close enough for tonight. But the boundary on the east side that runs north and south is State's Avenue? Is that correct?
The boundary on the left-hand side would be 115th Avenue. The boundary on the right-hand side would be State's Avenue.
Okay. Is 115th Avenue, is that the roadway that connects with Exit 59?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then the northern one is 34th Street. Where does that intersect Highway 22 at?
Where at?
Is that at Tuzin-Copecola?
Right.
Okay. So I just, so the public has a clear picture where this land is located then. All right. Does anybody else have questions? Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Cook, the blue area, are those retention ponds for the parking facilities? Or is that?
The blue areas, we just, we have represented in there is, the main blue areas that you see within the green portion is going to be mainly for detention, water detention. We just filled in the areas. It's something, Mr. Kramer, James Kramer, was at the meeting we had with Edna's group, and we talked a bit about what they want in this particular layout. We did add a bike path or walking path, which is represented, it's probably pretty small to see on your little drawings, but we have a 12-foot wide walking or bike path, which is right adjacent to the right-of-ways off of 115th and 34th Street. We are in discussions with them about taking some of the pond areas that hasn't really quite materialized yet. They were in a position that they would probably be looking at cash and some property in lieu of, so I guess we're leaving that open for further discussion with Mr. Kramer and his group.
So the large area is, is that the natural drainage coming through this?
Yes, that would be the way the natural drainage on that particular piece of property comes in, would be coming from that upper left-hand corner, down through the major blue again in the green area. And you'll see a piece way down onto the bottom center, and then it would continue into the rest of the Haroff property. There is also a little section on the lower left-hand side, which you'll see a slight canal there into a pond. canal there into a pond, and that pond would then empty into the larger green area. The ones you see in front of the multi-units are more of a decorative thing.
I have a question for Mr. Cortant.
Go ahead.
Did you go over this plan with him?
Commissioner Du卡r, yes. I provided comments with respect to the plan, some positive, some negative, depending on Mr. Cook's perspective.
It seems like there's so many curves, you know, so many winding streets going through there. What happened to the north and south?
Well, you could look at it two different ways. I mean, I look at this as still as a grid system. It's not your standard one for that. The big thing for me, and also for engineering and for emergency services, would be, does it follow a logical sequence? Can you get from point A to B without it being just your standard grid for that? And looking at it, basically, they do have east route, they have two roads, they do have two connections to the north, two to the west, and two to the east, and also connections further to the south. So, you know, based upon that, I think that that would be fine. We haven't had an in-depth analysis, but overall, I feel that that could work. I think in some ways, having some curves to that provides a little bit of character, depending on your topography. This area will have to be graded, and that may cut back on some of the grading or site excavation that you'll have to do on-site to have curved roads for that. But overall, I think it'd work, you know, within our system.
And with the, I'm always thinking snow, you know, we are in snow country. What would be the main routes through here? I mean, it would just be, because there's just a lot of homes.
I think if you look on your plan, first off, I'd like to jump into that, and I'm glad to hear that Mr. Cortant is being quite open-minded. We came in this to try to bring something new and fresh to Dickinson and get away from the 90-degree gridline look, up and down and straight across and kitty-cornered. So we put a lot of time into designing this and having it redesigned and redesigned, and the thought was to, boy, hopefully come in here and bring something really new to the city of Dickinson, which they don't have. And I guess that was our hope. But to get back to your question, if you can see on the drawings we have, you're going to see that there's two major streets that go left and right on your drawing, which are darker-
The gray.
Yes, darker than the other ones. And those would be the main in and outs, as Ed put it. One would be Maryland's Way, which is a continuation of Maryland Way off of Cook Meadow Hills. The other one would be Wall Street, which is a continuation of Wall Street off of Cook Meadow Hills also. As you can see, that main arterial street does go north up into 34th, and again, those are looking at the direct bypasses or arterials, if that's what you want to call them.
President Johnson, if I may?
Oh, Mr. Kessel, yes.
Commissioner Du卡r, this same Rick Harrison Site Design Studio is the same individual or group that designed Sundance Cove and Sundance Village. And within those two developments, you see similar types of curving streets and such. I think Chief Dossinger would agree that curving streets do tend to lower traffic speeds in these developments. So there is a natural positive about those curving streets as well.
Also, to elaborate with that, Mr. Kessel, this design versus a direct 90-degree gridlock is about 30 percent less pavement in the street than having, believe it or not, a 90-degree left and right turning. So it is quite efficient also for, you know, putting in city streets.
I just want to make sure it works for police department, the fire department, everyone out there that needs to do street work.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, at this point, this is a concept. It's, you know, it's not a plat. Right? And that's all we asked this group to do, is come in and show us what they had in mind. I think, I don't want to misquote Commissioner Jackson, but if I remember the discussion of the previous time you were here, you know, he was interested in doing smaller pieces of this. If you did this in, you know, smaller phases, where would you start?
Again, I agree. I think what we wanted to do was to give a vision of the whole 310 acres to begin with, and it will give some flexibility to change some things, which Mr. Cortant and his staff and us talked about. But to get to your point-
One of the, what can be serviced with this particular development at this point in time would be bringing a line that would come down through here, zigzag down through here, follow the back of Wall Street down in through here, come down zigzag across and follow the backside of whatever street is. So this portion right here is what could be developed.
So roughly half would be in the first phase, it looks?
Well, it's less than half. It's about a third. Half gets you more over into about here. We do have a count on the units. As I said, the whole thing at this point in time is about 1,254 total units. With what we want to service, we have it down to around 625 units. Unit-wise, it's about half of the units, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jackson?
You know, it's good we're doing this tonight. Generally, I think it's an attractive layout, and we've talked before about how this ground could be a really nice addition to our community. I'm sure there'd be detailed things that we'd have to talk to the developer about as we proceed, but I don't think that's necessary tonight. The two big issues are how we're going to phase it, as far as I'm concerned. You know, the line that you draw may or may not be what we're comfortable with right now. We'll just have to talk about that as we go forward. But the other issue that's going to be really important, and will be for all developments in the future, we're at a point in the city's development that, you know, we're going to do, for example, $20 to $30 million worth of sewer system improvements, partially, that will serve this property and many other pieces of property. And I think we're probably going to ask all those pieces of property to contribute to the cost to that sewer system. Same will be said with the water system, possibly with some streets. So as we approach any kind of annexation, any kind of preliminary plat, those are just things that we'll have to talk about as part of a development agreement with all of our future annexations. Same thing with property to the west and south, any of the newly-platted properties that will be coming in now. We don't have to get into the detail of that tonight. I don't think any of us could do a good job of it tonight. But I think it's just fair to say that we should expect those conversations as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. We, you know, since you've been here, we now have a draft copy of the comprehensive plan. Some of us have been able to read through it. You know, if you follow the engineer's recommendation, write to the letter and write to the dollar amount, taking out the transportation projects, they suggest that the city spend $177 million in the next two years on infrastructure. We've just recently met with our legislative group from District 36 and District 37. Mr. Kessel's had an opportunity to be in a meeting with the, some of the House members from appropriations, some of the leadership members. They're starting to reveal what they're going to be bringing to the legislature in terms of impact funding for the hub cities, principally Williston-Dickinson. The preliminary numbers we're hearing is, you know, it's, could be $18 million a year for Dickinson, $36 million to take care of that $177 million that the engineers are recommending we spend. So we're going to have to sort through all that, too. And as Mr. Jackson said, we're probably going to end up asking for a lot more cost participation than we may have been thinking as little as, you know, 60 days ago. The numbers are a whole lot bigger than we anticipated, and that's taking out the transportation dollars. We're assuming that most of our transportation needs are going to be in the state DOT budget, and that our match funds will be relatively minor, which may not be a good assumption. But, so, we're going to have some issues here.
President Johnson, if I may, just to remind you, that does not include our wastewater treatment facility, Public Works Building, or Public Safety Center.
Well, that's a good point. That's only on the recommendation by the engineers are only for projects that we're not committed to on a go-forward basis. And as Mr. Kessel points out, we have $48 million on the wastewater treatment facility. We have, I think it's $18 million on the Public Works Building, and we're assuming eight or nine million dollars on the Public Safety Building, all of which we received $12 million towards. So we have some issues there, I think, that we have to work out, too. So we have some challenges ahead of us. And we're going to, you know, that's going to have to be part of our discussion, too, when it comes to these various developments. But I think you have, what looks to me at first blush, a very nice concept, and if you have others that wish to comment on it, uh-
I guess what we'd probably be more concerned with is what direction do we take from here? What direction would you like us to take from here? I guess we were assuming, we brought you a concept plan, and we had talked about trying to get a portion of this, whether we say we're going to annex it now, we're not going to annex it now, yes, we have to do the plat, but how do you take what you're wanting or where do we go to anticipate we're moving ahead with this at this point in time?
Well, as soon as you can tell us what the legislature is going to fund us, then maybe we can try and answer your questions more completely. But we have big unknowns out there. And, you know, just, we just met with the legislative leader, or legislative group last week, late last week. We just got the comprehensive plan. It's a large plan. Not everybody's been able to read completely through it. Some of us have. But, you know, there's some huge numbers there, and I don't think we can answer your questions to the detail you'd like to have them at this point.
So we're not in a position to ask to move ahead with annexation, with plating? We're just dropping it here and now? I guess is that what we're asking?
Is that what I said?
Well, no, I-
I don't want to get argumentative with you. I'm just trying to point out that we have some new information since you were last here. There are big financial numbers, and we have a lot to sort through yet. I mean, you have a nice concept, and we want the community to keep up with the demand for housing. We certainly want to do that. But at the same time, we have to pay the bills. And I'm just letting you know what we know now, which, you know, we didn't know when you were last here.
And I fully understand what you're saying, but I guess, again, we'd also like to know what direction to take. Is the city interested in, what direction would you like us to take?
I don't know yet.
But we're asking, I guess.
I don't know yet. Maybe others at the table do, but I mean, it's not clear to me yet.
Well, we don't know yet. And, you know, there is, there is a good amount of undeveloped property already approved in Dickinson. If our growth continues, this will be a good addition. But we can't answer the questions that we need to answer you or to discuss with you to approve something like this right now. I think we're on the cusp of that, I think, as this winter goes by, as we finalize the comprehensive plan, as we know better what our financial situation is overall. But we can't do it today, and I wouldn't see something in the next month or two being given any serious attention until we know those things.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to this issue? Okay, we're going to, we thank you for being here, and we're going to move along then. I'm going to go back to the non-timetable agenda, and I think the next item there is Item D, and that's a request of a bid approval for bunker gear for the fire department. Chief Seavock?
President Johnson, commissioners, the low bid in this case was Grand Forks Fire Equipment, $31,300 for 20 sets of structural firefighting gear. The monies that make this purchase possible is unexpended funds from our recent Aerpac bid. As you may recall, we had $90,000 budgeted in 2012 to spend for the self-contained breathing apparatus, and we received another $90,000 from the sale of a liquor license. The Aerpacs came in at $125,000, $126,000, which more reasonable than we ever anticipated we would see that happen. And in conversations with City Administrator Kessel, we were able to repurpose about $50,000 of the remaining $54,000 for equipment purchases that would have been held up and would have been us chasing grant monies or donations to get. So with that, I would hope that we receive your approval to award this bid.
Thank you, Mr. Seavock. Any comments or questions? You've all had the material provided to you. Would you like to go ahead and approve this or disapprove this?
I'll move we approve the bid.
I second it.
We have the motion, the second. Other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson and Mrs. Du卡r?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. We got Item E. We have two annexations, and Mr. Coling will let you take us through both of those.
Mr. President, commissioners, the resolution before you is the last step in the annexation of Northern Heights subdivision. This is a smaller infill parcel of property. I believe it's approximately 10 acres. It's located, surrounded on three sides by the Cook-Meadle Hills addition. Back on November 19th, City Commission adopted a resolution calling for the annexation of this property. Since then, we have published the resolution and provided notice to the affected property owners, anti-Stark County, as required by state law. We received no written protest to this annexation. City staff recommend approval of the enclosed resolution in order to confirm the annexation of Northern Heights subdivision.
And you have an annexation number?
Yes. The resolution number would be 37-2012.
Okay, it's Resolution 37. Any comments or questions? There be a motion regarding this resolution? Move to approve?
Second.
We have the motion to approve and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Du卡r?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Next item, Mr. President, is the annexation of Lyons Third Edition. As with the previous item, this resolution is the last step in the annexation of this property. Again, this is an infill piece of property. It's approximately 23 acres. It is already subject to an existing planned unit development zoning request. Back on November 19th, the City Commission adopted the resolution calling for the annexation of the property. We published the resolution and had a notice to property owners as well as Stark County. We've received no written protest to this annexation. City staff and, or city staff recommend approval of the enclosed resolution in order to finalize the annexation of this property. Mr. President, this is Resolution 74-2012.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Coling. You've heard his introduction. Do you have any comments or questions? Would there be a motion? Would there be a motion regarding Resolution 74?
I'll make the motion.
We have the motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That brings us to reports. And, Mr. Kessel, are those yours?
Thank you, President Johnson. I do have a couple of reports this evening. The first is on the Public Works Building, opinion of cost. You've seen this document before. The difference is regarding the animal shelter. It is, we went back to the drawing table after the initial review by the commission. It was loud and clear that that facility was too large and too costly. The proposal that you see in front of you cuts the facility essentially in half. Most of that is achieved by lowering the number of kennels that are within the building. But you'll also notice there's a lot of other deletions, such as professional services, like a place for the veterinarian and things such as that. The essentials are here. I want to commend Chief Dossinger and his staff for assisting with this design. This is what they feel they need in order to operate an animal shelter that will be efficient and effective in the future. Those items that they need are all contained within this redesign. This redesign lowers the cost to around half a million dollars, just over that, about 530 to 560. And so, we hope that this is, again, another attempt to gain input on the revisions that were made. There were no revisions made to the public works facility itself. So, if you have comment regarding either of those two items, this is the time we'd like to hear that. We'd like to bring forth to you the option to put this project out for bid in January. So, we want to make sure that we are concise in our document, and that when that January date comes, January 7th, that you would approve that bid.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kessel. You've heard his introduction. Do you have any feedback on the Public Works Building or the animal shelter? I'm comfortable with the animal shelter as it's now designed. If anybody else wants to comment.
Mr. Chair, again, what is our intention for the reception area, other than the receptionist? But how is that going to be staffed?
Commissioner Steiner, the intention there is to have volunteers staff that reception area. It is not our intention that there will be full-time staff there in the building. It is not also the intention that the building will be open, a traditional 40-hour-a-week period, for public use. They would be scheduled, visits would be scheduled. There may be some time that would be open to the public, but it wouldn't be your traditional 8 to 5 type openings. That's where the commitment on behalf of the animal groups that are in town would come into play. They have, they are very interested in this facility. They have committed time. They have said they'll commit dollars to this project, and that's where we're counting on their assistance to come to fruition when it comes to helping us staff this building. And that staffing would be in the form of a receptionist.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jackson?
We spend a lot of time talking about the animal shelter, and, you know, that still gives me a little bit of pause, but it will be good to have something that will last us 40 or 50 years and have a good facility. That's a small part of the overall cost, though, and I hope that staff is looking hard at the Public Works Building to know that we can't do that sitting at this meeting. But I hope staff is looking hard at those costs and what we're going to end up with. But I do think, for the public, I think we probably have a lot of inefficiency right now in our public works operations because we're so spread out, because we can't do a good job on a lot of the things we need to do in a public works building. So, this is going to have long-term benefits from an efficiency standpoint and all of that. I think we need to move forward.
Anybody else? So, you'd be, in January, you'd be asking our formal position to go out for bids?
That'd be correct. We'd like to let this project out for bids, and on January 7th will be our intention to do so, to ask for that permission.
Okay. I don't see any reason why you can't go ahead and place that on the agenda. Does anybody else?
No.
Okay, so we'll do that.
Excellent. Thank you very much. The next time that I have is the staffing report. I do want to mention a few things. We've done a lot of hiring lately, and I want to commend HR Coordinator Nomenek for assisting me with this report. But I'm going to list some names and positions that we've hired recently. Justin Korth is a street maintenance operator, and he started with us in the end of October, October 29th, to be exact. Brittany Miller, she's a limited hour Fire Department's receptionist, and she started on November 12th. Robert Stanley, a street maintenance operator who started with us on November 19th. Tony Geetzen is a sanitation operator who started with us full-time on November 26th. Aaron, sorry, I apologize, I'm going to miss some of these names. McGawie, he's a limited hours library person who started with us on December 3rd. Shirley Maduna, who started with us on December 5th. Timothy Yolkerst is a police officer who started with us December 7th. And Marty Gary, who's a street maintenance operator who started with us December 10th. Those are obviously very significant positions. We're very happy to have those people aboard. I also wanted to let you know that we'll be conducting city engineer round-one interviews on December 26th and 27th. We'll also be doing round-two public works director interviews on January 2nd and 3rd. I would really like to have a city commissioner volunteer to be a member of that interview team. So, if anybody would like to, and I'll also make mention, when we get to round-two of the city engineer interviews, I'd like Commissioner Jackson, because of your special expertise, to be a member of that team. And when we get to the deputy city administrator, I'd like President Johnson to be a member of that team. So, if, you know, Commissioners Steiner, DuKart, or Altman would like to volunteer for the public works director interviews, I'd really appreciate that. I don't have dates on this second, or the second round, I'm sorry, is January 2nd and 3rd. So, if you're available, please let me know. And if you'd like to participate, please let me know. I think that concludes my report in regards to staff. I wanted to give a thank you to Attorney Coling for conducting, or for producing the memo for you today, and he did it one time previous that I forgot to thank him for. So, thank you, Attorney Coling. I appreciate that. That would conclude my report.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Steiner?
Mr. Kessel, where are we at with a city forester? We lost our city foresters, correct?
We did, and we had a person that we promoted into that position. So, we've, that position's been filled for, I'd say, the better part of a year already.
Any other questions?
With respect to that, Commissioner Steiner, I mean, it's become official just recently. We had him in as an acting. We had Trent in the position acting. He's done very well for it. I reevaluated the position itself and felt that, you know, at this point, instead of having a arborist and a city forester, that it made sense to have one, to use those monies as we have over the last year for some of the savings that we put in for additional trees and so forth. So, next year, I'll also add more for that for the budget as well.
Thank you for bailing me out. Okay, we're going to move along. Go to Public Safety and Fire Department, hear their report. Ms. Seavock?
President Johnson, Commissioners, the monthly activities for the month of November of the City Fire Department are as follows. November incident response, S.O.S. responding 38 times compared to 25 same timeframe in 2011 and 28 in 2010. 73 percent increase over 2010. So far, year-to-date, at the end of November, we were at 373 total incidents compared to 257 same timeframe in 2011 compared to 215 in 2010. Again, 73 percent increase over 2010, 45 percent increase over 2011. Routine inspections, the month of November, we're way up. October, again, as you know, we take a hit with that because of the fire prevention, public education activities. 68 routine inspections, 37 follow-up, 23 construction-related inspections, five childcare, 20 miscellaneous, which that's where all of our fire alarm and sprinkler systems tests are captured under that miscellaneous category. Tours, lectures, and demos, none in November. Took care of most of that, if not all of that, in the month of October. November activities, fire safety presentation at Benedict's Court for staff, our special operations team trained on auto extrication, and the regular training was also auto extrication working with the Dickinson Ambulance Service. And just to stay on this slide for a moment, I know you hear me talk a lot about the volunteers, and rightfully so, and these employers, the local employers that support them. And we always talk about the challenge it is and the challenge it's going to be to continue to grow the Dickinson Fire Department as the community grows, and to maintain and carry forward the model of the combination volunteer department that we have to date. Our recruitment efforts do pay off, and I wanted to tell you that. In 2012, we had 10 members, 10 new members, join the Fire Department. That tells me the recruitment efforts are working. Unfortunately, the dynamics of the community are this: By the end of 2012, we will have had seven members leave us, and all seven of those have been with us less than a year. And every one of them has been either to a job change or a lifestyle change. Not a situation, I can gratefully say, not a situation that says, you know, what you expect of me, what you want just doesn't work for me. It's job-related, or it's lifestyle-change-related that's taking them away. But it's very difficult to find that person, that individual, that could commit the time and the effort and the expertise that we need them to commit. Again, our recruitment efforts will continue. We're doing something new with a partnership with the Stark County Emergency Manager. Not only the Dickinson Fire Department, but several other agencies are going to partner with Stark County Emergency Management to do some type of an ad in the newspapers. This is going to be, the cost of this is going to be borne by Stark County Emergency Management. It's still in the building stages, if you will. We don't have all the particulars on it. But again, an example of where we're trying to think out of the box and reach out to those people in the community where volunteer firefighter service would work. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions or comments for Chief Seavock? All right, thank you. Next, we'll go to Chief Dossinger from the Police Department.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the commission, I have before you the November 2012 Dickinson Police Department monthly report. We had a total of 115 total accidents for the month of November. Five of those were injury-related, and 21 of those were hit-and-run accidents. There were a total of 515 traffic stops conducted. Of those traffic stops, 488 of those resulted in citations being issued, and 177 warnings were issued. For the month of November, we responded to a total of 1,907 calls for service. That's compared to 1,717 for the same timeframe in November of 2011. Comparing our annual comparison, at the end of November in 2012, for the year, we had responded to 23,081 calls for service. And 2011, for that same timeframe, we had responded to 20,973 calls for service. That's kind of a quick summary for what we've been doing in the month of November. At the end of the year, I do plan on doing a yearly presentation for you, which is going to break down each month as far as our activity levels.
Thank you, Chief. Are there any comments or questions for Chief Dossinger? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go to Item 6, which is a planning item, Oliver Commons PUD amendment. And Mr. Kirtan, can you introduce this?
Mr. President, this is the second reading for Oliver Commons PUD. This is an amendment to the existing planned unit development that was formerly known as Dakota Crossings. The new one for Oliver Commons is located west of the intersection of Sixth Avenue and 15th Street. It is approximately 5.9 acres. The city staff recommends approval based upon the 10 conditions that are stated or inserted within the adopting resolution. Condition 10 has been modified to clarify the issue, and I'll read that. The PUD shall expire 24 months after the issuance of the first building permit for any of the buildings unless an extension has been granted prior to the expiration date. The intent of this one is to provide two years for them to complete their project, or they would need to come back for an extension for the PUD. And with that, I can answer any questions you do have.
Thank you, Mr. Kirtan. Are there any questions for him? This is the second reading, ordinance 1493. If there's anyone from the public that would like to comment, you may do so now. Come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. No comments from the public? Any additional comments from city staff or city commissioners? Is there a motion regarding this item?
I'd like to make a motion to approve second reading, final passage, ordinance 1493.
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any other discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. DuKart?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, I had to add one last thing for the planning side.
Yes.
As all commissioners have received, the draft comprehensive plan, Wednesday, I would ask if you provide back to the office to me either your marked-up version of your comprehensive plan that I could forward on to the consultant, or the comments that you have with respect to that. If you need to take longer time, you can, but I know they're moving forward with the editing process, so if you can provide it by Wednesday, that would be appreciated, and I'll direct those comments back to KLJ. If you have any questions with respect to that, feel free to give me a call, and I'm more than happy to sit down and talk to you about that.
Is that by this Wednesday?
This Wednesday. If you could. If not, whenever you've had your chance, submit it in, but I can't guarantee that, you know, that's going to be necessarily included. There still is plenty of work to be done with it, but I know they're trying to move forward with their schedules. But, you know, Commissioner DuKart, do your best, and as soon as you get it, I'll forward it on to him.
We'll move on then to Public Works. We have a melon overlay project on Villard Street. Mr. Peck, are you presenting that? Or Mr. Kessel?
I can take care of that, President Johnson.
Okay.
Mr. Peck is shy. On the agenda tonight, you have a...
Shy is good, by the way.
President Johnson is shy, too. You have on the list an ID 94 Business Loop project that will take improvements along Villard as well. Northern Improvement is the low bidder on this project. It is a state project, so they let the bid and designed the project. It is on the city urban road system, so that means that we have a portion of that cost. That portion is about $360,000, or about 10 percent of the project. This amount was anticipated and therefore budgeted for. In order for the Northern Improvement to be awarded this bid by the state, they need concurrence by the City of Dickinson. It is our recommendation that we concur so that this project can move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any comments or questions here?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Jackson?
Can either you or Mr. Kessel tell me? You know, this is a project similar to what we talked about earlier this evening. This year's project was Highway 22. Next year's will be on Villard. I assume our local share is coming from sales tax, the 50 percent sales tax, or where is it?
Yeah, it would come out of the street fund, which is, up through this year, 50 percent of the 1 percent sales tax has gone. If you recall, in next year's budget, we're not transferring any money into the street fund because of its lucrative balance right now. We'll hold that in the 50 percent of the 1 percent fund.
Okay. My point is that these projects have costs that are not insignificant, either, even though it's a 90 percent federal project. They all add up, and when you look at our other needs, our other dollar needs in the coming years, we can't forget about these things or minimize the impact of them.
In fact...
Well, I was just going to say, it's an excellent point that when we talk about the comprehensive plan and the dollars in the comprehensive plan, those don't really include the ongoing day-to-day operations of the city and melon overlays and routine replacement of sewer and water... replacement of sewer and water lines. Those all still have to be done. That's your point, is--
That's my point.
And they're significant dollar amounts, too.
Could you just refresh? From I-94 East to how far in Villard?
It'll include the whole I-94 Business Loop along Villard. In terms of the project parameters, maybe Engineer Peck, you can remind me of the east and west. I believe it's the whole distance, is it not?
That is correct. It's essentially from exit to exit.
Okay.
Well said.
And President Johnson, if I may, Commissioner Jackson, to your point, we did ask the state to include trees and other such amenities to this roadway. The request came late in the design, and they've not included it in this project specifically. We may be able to get a transportation enhancement project in the future, but I did sit through a presentation by DOT, and those dollars are changing. They're no longer going to be called TE or Transportation Enhancement Funds, and so there is a concern that they may not be available in the future.
Just a little bit of information, Mr. Chair. The length from exit to exit is 4.88 miles.
4.88. It's quite a ways.
Pardon?
It's quite a ways.
Yes. Actually, it's 4.8840 miles.
Thank you, Mr. Carcer, or Mr. Steiner. Okay, we haven't acted on this that way. Is there any other discussion? So, we would really, the motion would be to concur with the state of North Dakota here? Is that the motion?
Mr. President, it would be a motion to accept the bid and award it to Northern Improvement.
Okay.
I'd make that motion.
We have the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Stookard?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We move to item, or tab eight, and the only item we have scheduled there is the city administrator's annual performance evaluation. Within your packet are all the individual evaluations, performance evaluations filled out by each city commissioner. I'll just quickly kind of summarize them. Under the area of leadership, three commissioners rated you exceeding their expectations. Two said that you met under management. Four said you exceed expectations in management performance. One said meets. In terms of job knowledge for this position, four said that you exceed their expectation. One said meets in communication skills. Three said you met expectations, and two said, or three said that you exceed expectations, and two meet. In terms of professional development, three also said you exceed expectations, and two meet expectations. Relationship building regarding city employees, again, three exceed expectations, two meet. And in relationship building with the community, two said you exceed expectations, and three said you met. There was also a chance, an opportunity for commissioners to write out comments regarding each of these topics. In terms of leadership, a number of commissioners commented on your ability to lead in these challenging times of rapid oil development. One commissioner commented on the need for a long-term comprehensive city staffing plan. When it came to management, commissioners commented on your ability to manage a large workload, and commented on the importance of retaining and selecting city staff. In terms of job knowledge, I think commissioners in general commented that this is, areas a strong point for you, and recognize this as a particular strength. Communication skills, I think in general, they commented that your skills are strong. One commented that this is by far your strongest trait. Others said you need to set aside more time to communicate to the public and return telephone calls and emails. In terms of professional development, commissioners noted that you're doing a good job of continuing to develop your professional skills. The relationship building with city employees, in general, commissioners give you high marks with maintaining a good working relationship with city employees. Commissioners support efforts to retain employees and to fully staff each department. Relationship building with the community, I think commissioners commented that you do a great job addressing the public. I think they also recognize that the public now extends well beyond the city limits, and extends to the state and federal limit. It would be my conclusion that this is a very positive performance review, and in terms of strength, on par with the previous two years. And with that, I would certainly open it up to individual comments by commissioners.
I just have one question. Since we have extended you to attend so many meetings and be out of town, who is the go-to person now when you're not here?
Commissioner Stookard, that's an excellent question, and until we get the deputy city administrator for finance hired, that person, the whole intention is that job will be that number two. They will be the go-to person. Today, it's a, it's kind of a mix of individuals, because we don't have a designated number two. So I would say that the area of expertise that you'd have a question about would dictate who I'd recommend you go to, and that's obviously by their skill sets. If it's planning, of course, Mr. Corton. If it's legal, of course, Attorney Coling, and so on, so.
Because when we, when we get a, sort of on a complaint from the public, the first question I ask them, have you called City Hall, or have you called the Works, Public Works Building? You know, have you called that person? And the answers usually are, one, it could be yes, but I haven't got a return call, or yes, but there isn't anything they can do about it. And those are things that, you know, as elected official, they expect me to solve their problems. So I need to know their side as well as the city's side, so I need to know who to talk to. And I don't want to be micromanaging, but I really need to fix the problem, so. My question and concern.
I guess, just a further comment, I'd recommend that you continue to contact me if you have issues, and then I can parcel out to whomever is most appropriate to deal with that, and then get back to you. If I'm not present, please, an email, a voicemail, something of that variety, and hopefully I can return it quickly.
Okay. But if you're in the air, and they are not patient, I know, I work in a field where people are not patient, they'll just move on to the next person, and, you know.
Well, Mrs. Stookard, perhaps you, when dealing with the public, you could also help to further inform the public in terms of maybe some of the issues that city staff and other commissioners are dealing with. You know, I know each individual question or complaint rates an answer, but also at the same time, we have an obligation to try to do the best job we can in funding all the city needs. And I think when we talk about Mr. Kessel being, his definition of public expanded to well beyond the city limits, much of that effort now is spent trying to tell our story and compete for funds as effectively as we can. And unfortunately, that's the situation. We are competing for funds. We're, first of all, we have to partner with all the other political subdivisions in the Bakken and compete for major funding to the all-impacted areas. If we're successful there, then the way the system is set up, we turn around and have to compete with all those other political subdivisions for that pie. And unless we're there at the table frequently telling our story, we're not going to get those funds. And we're talking potentially, I think, millions of dollars for our community. So, right now, he's the guy, in my view, that has to be out there doing that. And until we get a deputy administrator here, some of those questions are probably not going to get answered on a timely basis. They'll all get answered, but I think we have to keep in mind what the situation here is. And as commissioners, I think we have to communicate that issue back to our constituents It's a very busy time. I don't think there's any question, at least in my mind, there's no question that the environment we're in today is much more complex than the environment one year ago, and certainly greatly more complex than what we had even just 24 months ago. Times have changed.
Well, and I agree with that. I don't expect, you know, if you're in a six-hour meeting and somebody needs it, at Corton, for example, why can we not just direct them to that? And if they don't get a response, we call them and say, "Here's the question, they need to have an answer," you know?
Mr. Corton, when all is said and done this month, how many, what do you think the dollar amount of building permits is going to be, that will be issued by the city?
Well, at the end of November, I had the figures--
Are we going to go over $3 million, or $300 million?
At the end of November, we were already at that. We were at 304.
So the answer is yes.
Yes.
Are we going to reach 350?
Very likely. We have some very big projects that are coming close to be an issue. And, you know, we have the hospital, we have Stanford Clinic, which we've issued excavation for that, but we haven't issued the physical permit themselves, because they're still working on the interior plans. They may be issued this year, if not the first part of next year. So we will have easily 50 to 75 million dollars of just big, large projects within the next month or two.
My point is, Mrs. Stookard, it isn't just him that's busy. They're all busy. A year ago, they issued $123 million in building permits, and that was a record for us. A year before that, they issued $75 million in building permits, and that was a record for us. This year, it looks like $350 million in building permits. When you look at the staff that they have today to administer 350 million versus staff they had to administer 123 million, it's not a whole lot different. And we just lost a city engineer. These people are working hard. We've contract, you know, we've contracted out with the City of Grand Forks to get some help. I know, I get the calls, too, from builders and others that they want to know where their permit is and why things take so much time. Well, the reason it takes time is, we're dealing with a workload that is comparable or even greater than the City of Fargo, and we don't have that staff to deal with that. So, again, I think we have to make sure that we communicate the situation to our constituents. These people are working hard, are working very hard to try to do things on a timely basis, but this is a tremendous workload that has come our way. You know, we're dealing with nearly three times the workload that we dealt with a year ago, and a year ago, we were busy.
I don't, I don't think that's the question I asked. I just asked--
Well, that's the way I heard it. But other comments here, you know?
Mr. President, I was happy to see the performance review as a composite. You know, it made me feel better about the way I see Mr. Kessel is the way other people see Mr. Kessel. You know, with his meets and exceeds, we do not have a does-not-meet on here, and again, with that workload that Mr. Kessel and his staff are doing, I think a weakness would show up in there. You know, we'd be aware of it and so on. But with the meets and exceeds, you know, I'm extremely happy with this, to see this from the fellow commissioners that verifies that Mr. Kessel is doing a good job. So I'm happy with this here. Maybe in light of a couple of comments tonight earlier, Mayor and I might be able to change a couple of meets or does-not, do-not-meet. But overall, I'm happy with the job that Mr. Kessel has done.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Other comments?
I'll just make a general comment. You know, I know for Sean, this is the most uncomfortable time of the year, not the most wonderful time of the year. And I would say that the biggest difference between the evaluation, maybe even from last year or the year before, is certainly the dynamics of the workload that you're faced with. And remember, when I first got elected, and it was your first evaluation, we were on the heels of maybe a couple of missteps and learning processes that went along with annexation and just some other general things. I'd say the critical factor that we're under right now is, falls into your strongest suit, and that's communication. And moving forward, it's going to be vital that we communicate the needs for Dickinson. And your presence has gone beyond, you know, the county and the city to the state, and even to the federal level for us to get the funding that we're going to need moving forward. And that's going to take key communication. That's a strength of yours from the get-go. I would also remark that, as I talked with people in the public this year and said it was time for Sean's evaluation, I didn't get any responses of, "Here are the heartaches," or "Here are the missteps." And so that shows not only how you've grown in your position, but I really think from a community standpoint right now, Sean, you've got the community behind you. They see the importance of where we need to head. And probably the most frustrating part is that there are a number of things that are going very well in our city. And we get dinged for that, because when they compare us to other communities, they go, "Well, Dickinson's doing this right, Dickinson's doing this right." It doesn't negate our need for funding for the projects just because we're moving forward in an orderly fashion. And that's going to be your biggest headache moving forward, is communicating that on the state and on the national level with all the projects that we have going on. I just want to say, that for me was the biggest difference this year in evaluating your performances, looking at the bigger picture, and what we're going to really rely on with you moving forward. I think the other thing is, you know, adding the deputy position is going to hopefully free you up to do that communicating. It also, I think, addresses the bigger need that we have citywide, and that is to have our first, second, and third-in-commands in almost all of our positions, so that when we have something happen, like we did with Sean Soren, that we have somebody to step into place to fill those duties in the interim, so that we're not left with a gap. And that's going to be your second-biggest challenge moving forward, is staffing and completely staffing, so that we have first, second, and third-in-command in all departments.
See, that's the point I was trying to make. We don't want to overwork you, you know? So who's number two? And I guess the deputy when we get them.
I think the point Mr. Altman, Commissioner Altman just made very eloquently, is that we are stretched very thin, and there aren't a lot of backups, whether we're over on the building side, or the fireside, or the law enforcement. I mean, they're all busy, and they're all stretched very thin. I think the other comment I would make is, you know, this is a strong evaluation for Mr. Kessel, but it wouldn't be possible, I mean, he wouldn't get a strong evaluation if, you know, the other members of the team weren't performing well. And I think, you know, that's what we have, is we have a team that is working as a team, and they are performing well, and they're doing this in, under some pretty extraordinary workload conditions. This, you know, we're not, these are not normal times at all in terms of workload. So it's, you know, it's not just a reflection on Mr. Kessel, it's on the entire team.
And maybe that's where I can, if I could, President Johnson-- And maybe that's where I can, if I could, President Johnson, say a few things. I did write a few things down that I wanted to make mention of, and Commissioner Altman, you took the words right out of my mouth. It says, this is the most uncomfortable meeting for me, even though it was a good evaluation. I do, I'm humbled by your comments. I also wanted to reiterate the president's comments about the privilege I get to work for the city and work with the team that's represented mostly in this room today. It is entirely accurate that I could, I can't be successful without the good staff that we have surrounding me and the elected officials, you guys. I've been a city administrator elsewhere, and I spent a lot of time educating the commission. I don't have to do that here. You guys are progressive, you're connected to the community, you bring to the table excellent thoughts, and that makes my job easier as well, as much as the great staff that we have here working with us in the City of Dickinson. So, I did want to at least point those few things out. I will work hard. I know that this, you know, evaluation wasn't perfect, that there are some deficiencies. I'm glad you guys all think I have a big mouth. I'll do what I can to put it to use. And we do have challenges, there's no doubt about that. And I am trying to work hard to get us some of the dollars that we're going to need to be successful moving forward. So, thank you very much.
And, you know, we've said it in, earlier in this meeting, but we're not going to get all the dollars that the comprehensive plan says we should have. And I know Commissioner Jackson is already putting that good engineer's mind of his to work as he's going through that plan and trying to, he's trying to figure out just what we have to do that is essential so that we make sure that we maximize the dollars that we get, that we get the essential things and we get them in the right order and that, you know, we don't do anything dumb like build a street and don't put any pipe underneath it, you know, that kind of thing. And so, he's, he's already out ahead of the rest of the four of us, working on that, that kind of thing, because we're not going to get all the dollars. Okay, anybody else?
I might add one thing. Tax statements came out a few days ago, and I think, from what I'm hearing, that on the city side of that, the city side of tax, of the tax statement, that it showed some restraints, some good management, I think. I think it showed some success in managing this city. Mr. Kessel is the one that leads that. We've got a lot of other people in this room tonight, other city employees, who are really a big part of that. And the public really needs to know that doesn't happen accidentally, keeping those tax numbers as stable as we possibly can. So, I think it's, I think it's appropriate that we tie that directly to what our staff does, not just Mr. Kessel. Mr. Kessel leads it, but everybody, and keeping our property taxes in place that they're not jumping out of sight.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Anybody else? Okay, well, then usually I make a recommendation regarding the next year's salary. It's my recommendation that the commission set Mr. Kessel's 2013 salary at $116,000. As I thought about this, I guess I make this recommendation due to the growing complexity of the environment within which the city must operate. Because of that, the increasing workload for the city administrator, his excellent job performance in dealing with that complexity and that increasing workload, and based upon the information or the perception that I have of kind of what the market is for public officials in our region, this salary recommendation is within the market for public officials. But that would be my recommendation, and I would certainly be open to questions or comments regarding it. Chair, entertain a motion to accept my recommendation or reject it?
I'll move that we accept it.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Discussion?
The only, Mr. Chairman, the only discussion I would have is that, you know, we recognize it's a significant salary, significant salary for a significant position. And I think that as we move forward, we've got to keep that recognition in mind with all of our staff. We obviously have a responsibility not move too far too fast, but we need to really make sure that we recognize what our staff is doing all the way through the organization.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Other comments?
If I could, just to follow up on--
Are you going to oppose the recommendation?
Absolutely not. It's very generous. I just wanted to make the comment related to Commissioner Jackson's comments. Next meeting on the 27th, at our special meeting, I would like to present something that will address those exact comments that you made, Commissioner Jackson, so a preview of things to come.
Any other comments? Like I said, I'd entertain a motion either to accept the recommendation or reject it.
You have a motion.
Oh, do I? Okay. I'm having a senior moment. Did I get a second?
Yes, you did.
Oh, okay. Further discussion? All right. I've probably been in this job too long. We'll go ahead and vote then. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mrs. Stukart?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Were there any other items by city commissioners? Not as, you know, if the public would like to address the commission, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public that wishes to address us. Chair, entertain a motion to adj--